And it sounds like they more or less need a variance in whatever we can do. And I think whatever the town can do, maybe a variance or two, that's what the town can do. The article opens up other neighborhoods, and other neighborhoods aren't going to be able to respond. Now, I know you don't have as much control over the process, and I'm trying to understand it myself.
Right.
But what the other neighborhoods don't want to happen is for us to have to come up -- I mean, when I looked at each of these amendments, I was looking at ways to protect each of these other neighborhoods. So each of these communities need a chance to take it in, understand it, reflect on it, respond to it. We can't necessarily do that on the floor. We just can't. I mean, we have -- a lot of us have a lot of resources, but there's a lot at stake here. And these communities really care, and these communities really want to work together. And we want to come up with long-term solutions for all three of our neighborhoods, and the town as well. I mean, the 40B threat has affected a lot of us for a number of years, and we really want to just be careful with this. So I just wanted to support the Hillside neighborhood as best as we could in that we also don't want to see any more amendments, any more articles on this. We want to give them the time and space and support any variances we can give them to come up with a win-win solution and learn from it and hopefully apply it to our neighborhoods, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So then, yes?
Final comment. The only reason this is an issue at all is that we've only had a short time to have these discussions. I haven't been sitting in on them, but they've been very productive. But there's no guarantee, in other words, there's still at least one neighbor who didn't agree with this proposal. I think the neighbors in a butter. So, you know, that's why the developer is still concerned about having another option. And yes, of course, you know, it's for someone who owns land, the more options, the better. Absolutely. But that isn't the only reason. The reason is that there's no -- that you've done an awful lot to get support. You've worked very well, and it looks good to me. It looks like it's moving in the right direction. That's what I can say right now.
Okay.
I do understand what you're saying. You're correct. That's a view that the developer and the owner have at this time, but the planning board's going to have to, you know, decide what to do. Warrant Committee's going to have to decide what to do. It's difficult to get zoning amendments through unless there's a lot of support for them. That's the bottom line.
Yeah. And I think the only assumption that was made through the process was that it was not possible to pursue multiple paths at once, which is what led the thought that if this was denied and/or rejected as a condo bylaw, it had to move to 40B because we would not be able to continue to. And Bob Daler and Webb Collins, Bob Daler being an engineer, Webb Collins being a town meeting member, both said, you know, in any one of these cases, generally speaking, the parties continue to work on a resolution, which is why we supported the fact of saying, hey, we'll go for the 12-lot plan. We'll try to continue to work through, even though we know he may have to file for 40B, work through that process. So I think there needs to be some clarification on the fact that multiple paths can be pursued without interfering and having him sit out for 12 months, which seems to be his only last concern, which is why the bylaw amendment is even on the table, which seems rough to me.
So then, let me wrap up where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Actually, thank you all of those who have spoken. So there is no formal amendment in front of us now, so there's nothing for us to take a position on. We'll wait and see what happens. I think to a number of points that have been made, that if an amendment is proposed, it needs to get out as quickly as possible, but we also want to make sure, at least from the planning board's point of view, that the neighbors and the developer and the owner all have plenty of time to talk, knowing that there's this deadline from town meeting. So we're going to move back to the original article. We're going to bring Alex back in. We'll put this on our agenda for May 4th, Bill and Tim, just in case an article comes forward. But other than that, I think we are moving forward. Thank you all for participating. We look forward to hearing the results of any further discussions on this. And please keep the planning department aware of what's going on so that we're prepared for town meeting.
Good job, Alex.
Alex, I'm turning this back over to you for discussion of the article that's in front of town meeting.
On the original article.
On the original article.
Well, I think everyone agrees that the original article deserves to be sent back to the planning board or sent to the planning board for study.
Yes.
And that was a motion that actually we had when Ms. McHattick said, wait, I have an amendment some time ago.
Some time ago.
So shall we hear that motion again?
So I move that we recommend a town meeting, that the article of 48 be sent to the planning board for study.
A second.
All right. Any discussion?
I just think it would be nice if we make clear to the body that, but beyond the fact that it needs to go back to study, we think as it sits right now, it's got a lot of holes. It's going to open the town up to some very negative situations.
And that's why, I mean, it has no minimum lot size, it has no frontage requirement, it has a million problems.
Exactly. We don't want to take it back to tweak it and delay things.
Yes.
We want to take it back because it's a switch sheet.
Well, it's kind of probably given to the condo committee for its consideration, for what it's worth.
I just want to make sure that people hold.
Okay. Does that make that clear?
Yeah, I think that makes it clear. I think the other thing that we should just note in our discussion is that this does not preclude us taking a position on any amendment or amendments that come in front of town meeting, but at this point, we are most decidedly recommending that this come to the planning board for study.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we are going to go on to the Thayer Nursery application. And, let's see. This is a continued hearing, continued from the ninth. And when we last spoke, we were discussing fences.
Yes.
And since then, we have gotten a letter from --
Forgot to do that.
-- Miss Tevens, saying that she would like --
We.
It's you. Come on up. Come on up and --
It's not a she, it's a we.
Okay. Well, I -- yeah, it's true.
It's a we.
It's a we.
Yeah.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
You can discuss fences, but you can also discuss any other issues you might have.
I think, first of all, to start out is, we're direct to butter. We live next to Phil and John, and we live next to Pam, so we're sandwiched in between. And I think, you know, we've been there for 22 years, so there's been countless discussions of the nursery, the landscape business, and everything that happens over there. I really don't want to make it a we against them thing because we have to come to a solution. We're not leaving, they're not leaving. And I think the planning board, we need to get to a solution that works. It's not putting lipstick on a pig. It is a commercial operation, it's not a residential buffer. There are ramifications with it, and I just think at this point, the discussion has to be in the right direction, not -- you know, I looked at a plan, and not to digress, but a year ago, Ned reached out and said, you know, our engineers looked at it, you know, you have an acoustical echo chamber. Well, hell, yeah, I know I have an echo chamber. You know, we live it. And he said, we're going to work to get that eliminated. And then I look at a plan, and my neighbors have a fence, Pam has a fence, but in our corner, there's no fence. There's no, you know, acoustical barrier, there's no fence. So here, you know, Chris and I are thinking we're being good neighbors, we're having discussions with Josh, we're having discussions with Ned, but then, you know, when there's a plan, it's disingenuous when we're not incorporated in that process. And by, you know, not being, you know, raising, you know, up and down, emotional, oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh, and being, you know, Joe Prondex' best friend, and calling him up and saying, oh, I see this, and policing my neighbors, I feel like we're left out of the process. Yet, we're a huge part of that. You know, that corner, we're a huge -- the winds come, we get the bobcat noise, you know, we get the truck noise. And I just think that, you know, this is where it needs to come.
Now, you make an interesting -- I think that we were discussing last time that if you wanted the fence, certainly the fence should be there.
Right.
And you have attached to your letter --
Right.
Something about an acoustic fence, which looks good.
Acoustical barrier.
Because it's a chain-linked structure, which probably is going to withstand rot better than a wooden structure.
Right.
But it's only six feet high, and --
I recommended 10 feet. I actually did some research. I do architectural design, I work with a lot of contractors, large installations. So I put my feelers out, I made a lot of calls, and they said basically, when they have large jobs, I mean, because everybody's worried about noise. I mean, not just a neighborhood, I mean, everywhere you go if you're building. Chain-linked fence is going to last and be the strongest, and 10-foot is what is recommended with the acoustical barrier. And with that behind it, then do a buffer of trees. So anything that would go over the 10-foot, which is usually about two feet, that's what they're saying, it would also be trapped in the buffer of trees. They said it really helps a lot, and I am so willing to try something that's permanent because I don't want to police my neighbors. I don't want to, you know, Josh and Maggie won't have a life. They have kids, we all have kids. You know, like I said, we've been there for 22 years. I just want to live in peace. Last summer was utopia. I pinched myself. I just want a little of that. You know, I know there has to be a compromise, but I really feel that, look at it as a commercial operation. Don't think of it as this residential buffer. It's not. You know, we have bobcats, we have trucks, we have dust, we have noise. You know, just because it's in our little armpit and it doesn't affect anybody else, we still deal with it.
And you mentioned in your letter that at a certain morning at 3:45, a large --
My wake-up call.
-- large truck arrived and spent half an hour positioning itself somewhere. Did the backup horns sound at all?
Yeah. I mean, you got an 18-wheeler pulling in, and it was that really nice night that you actually could leave your windows open. And I was like, are you kidding me? So I got out of bed, and I'm looking, and I take my dog, I go, I flip on the floodlights, and then it shut off its motor after 20 minutes, and then, you know, it was doing a delivery. I understand, they have to get deliveries, they're in business. You know, they need trees. You know, I get that, but there has to be some type of balance. That's all I'm asking.
And you --
Not at four in the morning. That's not a balance to me.
No, but you -- the fence is, of course, one of the big items in this --
It's permanent.
And their mitigation is probably the biggest item of the mitigation plan.
Right.
And so the question is, does acoustic fence --
Yes.
-- make 10-foot drops?
Yes. And I wrote it in there. It comes 10 by 6, and it's actually applied to the chain-linked fence with plastic hooks. So it comes in a roll, you order it direct, you have to leave it out for about an hour, they said, till it gets, you know, a little pliable, and then you actually can roll it out and you put it right through the chain link and attach it. And it just doesn't become like a kite -- because I asked him about the wind, because we do have prevailing wind, so I did say, hey, you know, what about a wind issue? And he said, absolutely not. It becomes part of the fence, basically.
Right. It depends on how deep the steel pilings go down.
Well, I'm hoping --
What act is a sail with wind?
I did ask that, and he -- they're --
Did they say?
They said no. They're saying no. They said it actually becomes part of the fence, and chain link was the sturdiest. And I'm hoping you just get, you know, someone that knows what they're doing.
Well, it sounds good to me.
Quick question on that.
Can I say something first?
Yeah, absolutely.
As well, this is a -- we've been there for 22 years. I'm Chris Tevens, by the way. We've been there for 22 years, and we went through this in '04 with different -- the neighbors before John and Phil had similar issues. We hired an attorney, and we tried to get it right. So this is another go-round where it's been an unpleasant experience for the neighbors that are in there. Tina and I are going to move, John and Phil may move, Pam may move, there's going to be another generation of people that come in, and they're not just going to be deaf or put up with it, it's going to be the same thing for the board. So it's imperative to get it right. The other thing is, on top of the fence, one of the biggest issues for -- I don't want to speak for anybody but us, is noise, and there are much quieter vehicles. Tina and I were on vacation once, and there was a, coincidentally enough, there was a Corona commercial. Everybody's seen the sand commercials. So they were setting up on a beach right next to the hotel we were staying at, and it had to be 40 yards away, and I was absolutely shocked at how quiet they were.
Bobcats.
They were bobcats, and they were moving sand around.
Right.
It was absolutely shocking, the disparity between what we live with and what's available out there.
Right.
So I would ask that the board look at, and I'm happy to help research that, look at the quieter version, which may alleviate a lot of the stress that's going on.
A lot of noise, right.
So the fence and quieter machinery, you know, I'm -- I hope Thayer makes a gazillion dollars, and everybody's happy, but I just want to be able to go in my backyard, and I invite anyone here to come in my backyard during the summer when the bobcats are blazing, and try to have a conversation in our backyard, which we've spent a lot of money on, with the person next to you. You cannot do it. So what happens is, instead of enjoying a summer evening in your backyard, you go inside. That's not really fair to anybody. I mean, even the Big Dig stopped after 15, 17 years. This is just not stopping. So I urge that you get it right and make everybody --
In the hours operation, we are not going to police Josh and Maggie. I'm telling you right now. I'm not going to go out there and say, oh, they started at 7:02, oh, the truck came back at 6:15. You know, they don't want to live like that, I don't want to live like that. It's just being a good neighbor. It's just thinking to yourself, oh, you know what? Home from work, maybe they want to enjoy the pool. I'm not going to, you know, start up the bobcat right now and do this, I'll do it tomorrow, you know, at 10. Just striking a balance would be nice.
So just on the fence, you said it's the fence, then it would be plantings, and then the property line, right?
Correct.
So the plantings are behind, between you and the --
Correct.
Okay.
You got it. The fence needs to come first because --
They're on both sides, the plantings.
Well, just I just wanted to clarify what she said. I mean, did they have anything about the plantings on both sides being an issue?
No.
Okay. Because that's what we have in the zoning, was that they'd be on both sides.
Right. I'll take both sides.
Screen the fence.
Okay.
I mean, if you're going to get both sides, definitely I'll take both sides.
Okay.
But to me, more importantly, it's the sound barrier. It's the sound absorption. Love to try it.
Okay.
You know, I mean, because for us, really, it's the noise and the dust. So to me, that's blocking it. You know, you've got sound, you've got a barrier. I mean, that, to me, I think would mitigate a ton.
And so the proposal for your neighbors, and one of the questions was whether or not you wanted a fence, because there was some confusion on that.
Yes.
So thank you for coming in and clarifying that.
Yes.
So for your neighbors, on one side, it was proposed an eight-foot wooden fence, and on the other was with the acoustical, and then the other was a -- the current proposal is a 10-foot wooden fence, non-acoustical. You're okay with chain link and the acoustical? I just want to make sure.
I think chain link.
It works with us.
I mean, wood fences are expensive, for one. They're more expensive, and they break down. I mean, we just replaced our fence, it only lasted 12 years, and it was supposedly, you know, great cedar. Chain-linked fences, you know, it'll be there by the time we're gone, you know, and then you won't deal with it again. I think chain link, economically, it makes the most sense, you can, you know, and it'll last longer. Why deal with this again? That's what I'm trying to say. Like, can we just get it right? You know?
We want something that will last, because if we issue a permit, we don't want broken-down fences coming up on renewal.
Exactly. Right.
And what do we think about the volunteering to come up with some vehicle specifications? That sounds like a good plan, doesn't it? You're on.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, yeah.
Bill Clark is our general recipient of important information. Okay, now, what does the board think about fences? I personally think a chain-linked fence is hideous, but with --
Actually, 10 feet.
You know, once you attach the sound attenuating material, you've got to have the screening on both sides, the vegetation, because -- and a 10-foot wooden fence would be -- we will get -- you're going to get the comment. A 10-foot wooden fence, in my view, would not be a particularly aesthetically pleasing experience.
On the other hand?
On the other hand?
We're looking for a quieter experience rather than -- I mean, I prefer wooden fences to chain link myself, but if a 10-foot chain link with the acoustical material going all the way around, buffered on both sides of vegetation, is acceptable to the neighbors, then I'm -- to all three sets of neighbors who would be affected, then I'm okay with it, because it will be buffered by the trees. If they would prefer a wooden fence, will a wooden fence and the acoustical material adhere as well? I mean, it sounds like this material is made specifically for chain-linked fences.
It does, no, it does go on a wood fence, but in his experience, it's something that, you know, six years, seven years, it breaks down. Where the chain link, he said, I can still go, and it's still there.
I mean, it's a black blanket, which is effectively, by the looks of things, I have never seen this product. It appears to be covering up the aesthetic of the chain link.
Right.
Which will then have --
Planting and something.
Somewhere between 15 and 30 feet of trees in front of it, depending on which side you're on.
Right, exactly.
I think the blanket effectively goes away.
Yeah, you look through the trees.
With all the trees.
Yeah.
I do want, I mean, everyone in the room knows what that is, right? That post right there is 10 feet. It doesn't even fit in the room, so I just want everyone to be aware that that's a tall chain link or any kind of fence, and these are your backyard.
It's a tall fence.
So, I mean, I think we want to be very clear that it's, that's a big fence.
You want to make sure you're not going to see it, because --
Oh, I'm, I really, that's cool.
No, no, I just, I work on construction sites. It's the sound we're worried about, not what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
If there's nothing there, we're looking at the big side of a warehouse. That's fine. I've never seen a 10-foot. I've worked on --
I have at prisons.
I've worked on sites at Harvard, where the people in Cambridge are crazy. I've worked at sites at MIT, at Tufts, to buff a sound. I've never even seen a 10-foot fence, never. But as long as you can't see it, you'll be all right. But if you have to see a 10-foot chain-linked fence, you're going to feel like you're living next to a prison.
I think in this matter, we want to make sure that everybody, you know --
Knows what they're getting.
Exactly. That's exactly what.
That's, you're going to go far and wide to find a 10-foot fence.
How tall are the prison fences? Are they --
I think about 30, the wall is about 30 feet.
Do they do have, they do have chain-linked fences on certain prisons, and it might be worthwhile, yes, yeah.
You also have the issue that I heard each of the three neighbors in the back say, we want a continuous fence. You really don't want a continuous 10-foot fence, because you just trapped every animal that's coming either into Thayer or into your yards from getting out, because they're not jumping that fence.
No. Right now, the deer, though, they come right through my yard.
Right.
But they come up my driveway, and the fence, it would be fine. It goes right up, they go right up Pam's property.
Go right into Pam's property.
Yeah. And they're going to continue going that way. I mean, they don't go over to Thayer, it's gravel, and there's not vegetation for them to eat. They burrow and they nest.
But that's now. There will be new plantings in there.
Bill, we've heard that concern before. I mean, would you, I don't know much about how that, how to avoid the entrapment of animals. Is it sufficient to have the fences overlap with a, you know, three-foot opening or something? With a stagger?
You could stagger them, you could make them eight feet. They can hit it, they can go --
I'm not going to get into that.
Thayer can clear eight feet.
Eight feet. MWRA has them around their reservoirs at eight feet, because they can clear it. Cannot go -- that's what they're not going to make.
I don't, you don't want to wake up to that.
No.
I'm just looking at the eight-foot length versus the 10-foot length. How do you guys, you know?
Right.
I mean, the staggering's another option, or can create a break.
I'd rather not stagger. Honestly, I'd rather not stagger. I think it's more effective if it is a continuous run. I mean, you're talking about acoustics, so I'd rather have no breaks where the acoustic can go in. I mean, acoustical barrier works better if it's continuous.
But you can overlap, and you've attained the same thing.
True.
That's what I think we were suggesting. We weren't suggesting break, I think I was suggesting overlap.
To get to the backside of the fence.
Something like this.
Okay.
To hit to the trees out there, too.
Fine. Okay.
So you need to have some type of opening or something in there.
Fine. Overlap, I understand. I thought you meant an opening is in a --
No.
Yeah, well, that was, that's a problem with the opening.
Right. So it has to be staggered or overlap.
Okay. All right.
Either that or a gate, and you don't want to --
You're going to teach a deer how to open a gate?
No, but you're going to wind up, you've got, you've got plantings on the other side that belong to Thayer.
Right.
If they take those plants out and put in new ones.
Yes.
You know, how do they get to them?
Right.
All right, let's see what Mr. Oldfield says about this fence. Stick around, we may have, you might as well.
I'm not going anywhere, but --
We want to, want to see what we can do about the fence tonight.
Good evening, folks. Josh Oldfield here. I want to give you a little history regarding my relationship with the Tevens. I met with Chris and Tina about four or five years ago in their kitchen to help come up with a neighborly solution for their concern. In the remedy, a deal that we struck between one, two, three, and myself, person to person in their kitchen was met. We agreed with the Tevens to go onto their property, plant at no charge, 16 cypresses 12 to 14 feet tall, at no charge. They're in place today. They're brown on the backside facing our property line because of the natural buffer that exists. There's a natural buffer between the cypresses that are now 20 feet tall on their back property line and our property line. There's a buffer of, there's a natural buffer of 45 feet that exists as we speak. So it goes from a 20-foot planting that we planted free of charge to a 45-foot natural buffer to an evergreen grow-out area that starts with 20-foot evergreens and goes down to four-foot evergreens that is 70 feet deep. So, call me crazy, but that's an aggregate of 70 plus 45 of buffer plus the plantings I planted free of charge on their property. So everyone's talking about, well, they feel left out of the process. I don't get it.
Well, they're talking about noise.
Right, but if you study
Admittedly, if you, you've mentioned that you've made efforts to control the noise
Correct.
Through natural vegetation.
Correct.
But they
So I just want
They take the position that the noise is getting around the vegetation.
Alls I'm just stating are the facts. You guys are here to, to help come up with the solution for all of us. So, the way we felt was we were in agreement with the solution at that point, based on what they told us.
That was seven years ago.
Yeah, or whenever it was.
The trees are dead.
Right.
Well, I'm just saying, at the time
Completely, completely.
No, I totally agree with everything you're saying, except it was seven years ago.
Yep.
And since then, I mean, you have to look at your business model. You've grown substantially every single year, and the noise has increased with that growth.
If that were, if it were just, we wouldn't be sitting here.
No, understood.
That's those guys' problem, the sound is gone.
But if I can
That's not the case.
No, but you just heard, they lived in Utopia last year.
It was a cease and desist.
No, the Utopia was, we moved the piles, we moved the piles.
No, it was a cease and desist.
Just, please let me talk.
There were no bobcats.
Please let me talk. We moved the piles to the other side of the barn. We implemented what you guys and us came up with, what the zoning plan did. So, the stuff got moved away from their property line, and in their mind
Whoa, 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 wait.
And in their mind, Utopia was created.
Well, but, but they, they say recently Utopia has disappeared, and and
And landscaping still has not returned.
We haven't been landscaping on the property.
And we have had bobcats all last year. So there's inconsistency in the testimony.
The question, the question is, the question is the extent, because if you do landscaping from your premises, you're going to be doing more bobcat work, you're going to be bringing in more materials, you're going to be bringing in more trees, you're going to have more noise than you currently have, because you're going to have, well, you can't say that, because you have to. You can't run a nursery and then say, "We can add a landscaping business on top of that" without increased noise. I mean, you've got more trips, you've got more materials, you've got more employees, you've got, I mean, your, your trucks are down in Canton now. If you bring them, you bring them home, how can you possibly not have more noise?
And they were home, and then I called Prondak, who went over there and counted the trucks were supposed to be in Canton, and there were more there, and then you pulled them around. But I just want to go, not to digress, but Maggie, this is not us against you. You know, you come to the table, you move your chair over there. This is, we want to find a solution here. You know, you won't even look at me. Let's, we can talk to Josh. You know, Josh came over, you've never been over to our house. You know, why wouldn't you even sit next to me? This is a process. We're trying to find a solution, not a, "We suck." I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of sick of this. Like, let's make this work.
I have never, I have never, ever done that. That is not
Then why don't you sit next to me, and let's get a, let's work through this process, and let's get a solution that everybody agrees on, all right?
I'm not here to argue.
I'm not here to argue either. I'm here to work together, okay?
And we have been working together for the past year, and we have come up with this plan for the past year.
All right, I'm a little frustrated, because
I guess, as am I.
When I look at the plan, and then being left out of the plan, you know, we had, which I feel, I don't know if you agree, Josh, but I felt like we had good discussions on what
Agreed.
On what we felt was going on on our property, and for you to address them. Ned called me up with every metaphor under the sun. We want to put the genie on, and back in the bottle. They want to be better neighbors. What can we do, what can we do, what can we do, okay? Now, this wasn't seven years ago, this was last year.
Correct.
So you knew as of last year that there was a problem. So to go back seven years, we have a problem. Let's find a solution. I don't want to go back and forth with, you know, this and that, and what trucks. Let's just move forward. We keep going back.
I agree, that's why Chris and I spoke today.
You know, and I'm sorry I raised my finger.
I am moving forward.
But I, I'm sorry I did that.
While we're attempting
Frustrated on going back. Can we just go forward?
Can I object something? Maybe we could get to a resolution. Can you put up a 10-foot chain link fence?
Yeah.
Is it continuous?
What?
No.
Around the whole property?
No, from, from here to here.
Just the L.
Depending on where it goes. I, I just have to think about the logistics of where it's going.
Yeah.
Yes.
What we're trying, what we're trying to do is
What I would suggest is, a chain link fence is an okay thing to do. The only problem I have, I would propose a six-foot high fence there. Just, 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 just listen, hear me out, please. Because the sound, as Tina knows, the acoustic fence comes in 10-foot heights. So
Six by 10.
Six by 10. Yeah, it's six by 10.
What we're trying to do here, just so we can, we can maybe get on to a positive page
But we thought
Is that we understand, we understand the nursery is currently making a fair amount of noise in its operations. And if the landscaping were to be brought back to us, it would add more noise, and it would be even worse than it is now. What we're attempting to do, if we grant a permit, is to make the combined operation quieter, significantly quieter, than the nursery operation is. In other words, by the fence, by the traffic movements, by the use of equipment, by the other mitigation measures, to make the entire operation, if we were to give a permit, and that, of course, is a question. If we don't give a permit, presumably, they won't do the mitigation. And, but that's not our, that's not our department. What, what we would try and do is, if we issue a permit, make sure the permit ends up with a better overall, a significantly better overall situation, because that would, that would, is the only way it's really going to work, I think. Isn't that what our mission is here?
Yeah, I could, I can honestly say, I just wish that, through this whole project, I thought that I had addressed the issues with the Tevenses because of the planting and the rearrangement, configuration. I figured all those things were enough to address the situation, and it just caught me off guard when the letter came out. And I'm not here to, I know it all started with that one truck, but I want to defend that. Well, I, I just want to say what happened, that's all I want to do. And as, as I explained to Chris, there's no way, a truck cannot get into our facility after hours, because we have automated gates. And I know the code, Maggie knows the code. So there's no way a truck comes in at 3:00 in the morning to offload. What had happened was, he came in after hours. He, he left Oregon, traveled 3,200 miles, got here after hours. We did not offload, because it was after hours. The plants were in a refrigerated truck. The thermostat went off, the reefer kicked in, and that's what caused the noise. So it was a perfect storm of events that happened, that shouldn't have happened. It probably happened, it happened since 1994 to six times. So it's not a regular occurrence, and the Tevens can testify, it's not a regular occurrence. It did happen, there's no doubt about it, but that's the reality of the situation. So we don't promote truck traffic to come in at 3:00 in the morning. They can't get in at 3:00. I live next door, I'm the first one in, I'm the last to leave, I'm the guy who closes the gate. I'm the gatekeeper. So, that's how that works. But again, I'm not condoning it, but that's what happened.
Okay.
Why don't we just, why don't we try to conclude?
Defending portion. Yes.
I think that you know, that's just what we're going to try and do.
Oh, boy, Mike.
And we have Mr. Rowe who wants to add a word. Why don't you come up and do so? And people, people can, can move sort of back and forth from the audience to the table, if they like.
I would prefer, John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive, I would prefer a 10-foot cedar fence that's put in the ground with cement, the posts are pressure-treated posts, put in the ground with cement, and to have the sound barrier put on that. Also, I think that if we do get a wooden fence, there has to be something in there that, that their nursery has to maintain it. It must always be in proper order, and I think it needs to be inspected to make sure it is in proper order. Additionally, I believe that the fence, right now, where they have it on the plan, it is on the other side of the gully that they dug, that all the water from their property drains into, and then subsequently drains into my property. That fence is in front of what they call the old log line. I believe at some point after 1987, all of this land was filled in, and then they built that log line, and they planted hemlocks on the Thayer side of the log line. So what they're proposing to do is to put the fence on my side of the hemlocks, which is significantly lower than the construction yard, which is on the other side of the hemlocks. And I believe we, what I would like to see is a continuous fence that goes all the way to the end of my property line, in front of the hemlocks, and behind the circus tent that they put up this weekend. Circus tent is another thing we'll talk about later, but since we're talking about fences, I think it should go all the way, can I show you on the, on the chart?
Yeah.
What?
Make a taco?
Yeah, it's on here. Who drew this on here, Paul Neil?
It's what?
Who drew this on here? This is like the fence that they're representing. They're representing the fence here.
Yeah.
Green line. Who drew this?
I thought it was yours.
It was mine. Maybe I did, I don't know.
Is this, is this the, is this the neighbors' alternative plan that you asked for in the meeting before last?
That's what that is, yeah.
This is the alternative plan that you asked the neighbors to present on behalf of the applicant.
You can
Here's the, here's the actual plan.
This is a good start, the alternative plan that we put together.
I don't think I've seen the alternative plan.
We had a last meeting. I don't have it, he has it. It's the one that
I didn't see it in this size.
It's the only size we get.
I guess, I, I, okay. I know that, I know that what I feel about this, but people should look at it. There is, the press mentioned that I sort of said the alternative plan was no good, and
I don't think that was your wording.
But I, I think that if the board, if the board feels the alternative plan is a good plan
Can we, at the moment, just finish the fences? Yes.
We already talked about the alternative.
At the moment
And it was highly irregular that you asked the abudders to come up with an alternative plan for the applicants. That rarely, I don't even know that it's ever happened.
All right, let's do the fences, then we'll, then we'll, then we'll go back to the alternative plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Because I want to make sure that
Shall I show you the log line on this, or on? I'll show it.
You want me to zoom myself?
Yeah, right here is where the hemlocks are. Then the ditch was built so that all the water funnels here into a ditch that they dug here on my side of the hemlocks. And where they're present, where they're going to put the fence is on this side of the hemlocks. Then there's a ditch, and then there are some dead shrubs that they had put on the other side of the ditch. I think they died because of the water. So I believe that the fence should go in front of the hemlocks, all the way across here, and an L like this. And this should be a permanent, a permanent buffer, not in, not a grow-out area, or shrubs put there in burlap bags that are going to be moved back and forth constantly. And if it's a, if it's a, a permanent buffer, then there's no need for anybody to go back there. But we must address the drainage problem. We cannot leave all of the drainage from the property going into that ditch. You know, we have got a lot of problems to solve here.
We need to get to the drainage, I think the drainage comes back to the fencing, yeah. We need, we need, yeah, that's clearly been an issue that has to be fixed.
The fence only goes in this plan to here. My property ends here. It should go all the way to here, and I would like to see it closed off.
Okay, but at a minimum to the end of your property line, correct? Okay.
Yeah. And I don't believe that we need any kind of overlap. It should be a continuous fence, and my preference is wood.
Yours is the wood, okay.
It has to be maintained, and the posts have to be pressure-treated wood, put in concrete.
So then we should also hear from Ms. Lapore after your
Come on out.
Actually, I need to refer, Pam Lapore, 44th and 43rd.
Do you want the, the alternative plan?
Yes.
Why don't you take that
This, we're going to use this for display?
We've got two of them.
Oh, okay.
So Pam, the question would be what material you want in the chain link for, or the cedar?
All I want to know is what's going to be most effective.
Okay.
I came home yesterday, and through the weekend, I came home yesterday, went upstairs around 5:30, 6:00, and went to my closet, which is on the south side of my house, and I could hear the bucket dragging in my closet. It was terrible. Something that could be done, breaking, they dragged the bucket, dragged the bucket. I'm sure you guys heard it, too. In my closet, on the second floor. I want quiet, I want peace. I don't know, I'm not a fence person. I don't know if the chain link is going to be the best solution. Clearly, I think the wood's going to be more aesthetic. And of course, you all know, I really have a problem with the location of the land area. And I would like to know why this alternative plan won't work.
And we know you want to discuss it, but we want to at least get the fences
So the fence, okay, the fence. I understand they're proposing the fence 15 feet, I believe, from the lot line. But there's also the drainage there, so that is, I don't know, about three feet wide. So there's a piece of land, the drainage ditch, and probably about five feet of dirt to plant trees. So I really think the fence needs to go beyond 15 feet. And here's the drainage ditch.
Is that the fence?
That's what we're proposing.
Yeah, the fence is, is a green.
We changed, we changed this last time.
I thought that the fence had gone further in.
Yeah, so you're supposed to have plantings between you
What is the number say, Tim?
And the fence.
With respect to the
And then plantings on the other side, and I've got it scribbled here.
But I need, yeah, I'd like to know
I thought that had been shifted.
Because there's a drainage ditch there that's probably this wide.
It seemed to me that we, we brought it out so that there's a, that we had much more room on the other side of the fence for planting.
I don't have it all beautifully done, but I, I know we had, I know we had added plantings between
Because as it looks right now, I see what the fence
Yeah, we, we said this.
There's, there's markers there.
I think they're, I think they're meant to shift it.
They would take the plantings, and they would bump them out in that area.
But they're also going to put plantings on their property side between
Oh, they were always shown on this Lapore side of the fence.
Right, exactly.
On their property.
Right.
But on her side of the fence.
Right, so they're going to have double, double, and they're going to bump it out, and then they're going to narrow the area next to the barns, so nothing can come through on that side, yeah.
I'm still confused about how much land goes to
We haven't seen the new drawing. I think they're probably waiting till we come up with everything and do the new drawings.
To where the existing fence is, 15 feet.
I imagine they haven't moved those yet, so, can, actually, can we get a clarification on that? So are you, wait, because we were obviously going to be talking about a lot of different changes.
Pam, why don't you take this plan and go down to that chair at the other end of the table? Because people are going to mistake you.
Let me just get this clarified. Is it your intention that after we go through all of these, we'll get revised drawings that show where everything is? Okay, so, so you haven't changed anything in response?
Here's what I had come up with as of today, that I think is a viable solution for both parties regarding the Lapore property line. So we have the property line, let's start with the property line and work our way towards our property. So we have the property line. Then we have a four-foot swath of existing gravel for drainage. Then we, so there's 15 feet between the property line and the proposed fence line. So that leaves a planting bed between the backside of the gravel and the fence line. And then on the backside
What's the width?
So that'd be 11, if you've done before.
11 feet, okay.
11 feet.
Okay.
And then the, the fence line.
Yep.
And then on the backside of the fence line, we have another planting bed of six feet. And then in an area centrally located in the land care area is an area 60 feet wide by 30 feet that comes out from the property line as a belly, just like that.
Are there permanent plantings?
Yeah.
Are those permanent plantings or in burlap?
That would be, that would be a grow-out area as well.
So that's not a permanent thing, so they're not going to get very hot.
The permanent plant, there will be a permanent planting of the arborvitae in the six-foot area.
The ones on the straight line are permanent, the ones in the belly.
So there's 10 feet to plant trees there?
There's six feet on the back, there's, on your side of the property is 15, or actually, on our property, between the property line and the fence, there's a total of 15, minus the four for the drainage, so that leaves 11 foot of, take 10 feet, worth of
To plant.
So, does the drainage go right to my property line? I don't think there's
It's recessed back about a foot.
Okay, so now we're in five feet.
So, no, yeah, okay, five feet.
So 10 feet of, of.
There's a total of 15 feet.
So how wide is this table? You're going to get one row of trees?
That's 10 feet.
So there's one row of trees.
But it's going to be double-barreled on both sides of the fence.
You're getting a row on your side.
But the other side is, is not permanent.
We're getting a row on your side. You're doing, we're doing a fence. We're doing another permanent row on our side.
And then a bump out in the middle of the land care.
The permanent trees need on our side about six feet, so that, it will be a six-foot permanent planting.
And how high are these trees?
They're on the plant list.
And to Brian's comment, so Brian, I know you were concerned about the distance between the back of the barn and the planting bed. That leaves us about a 12-foot bed or path there at the most to, so. And then we could connect that bump-out bed. It's going to return back to the six-foot bed, sort of in that area, so we can sort of have a narrow, narrow channel there. But then we'll bump it out to bottleneck it right there to a gate.
So how do we determine what fence is going to be more effective? How do, how?
We get our professional, yes, Stu, can you tell us?
Yeah, can I speak on the second? Hi, Scott Johnson from 11 Hillside Street. I, I think that, I, I have no vested interest in what type of fence is here pro or con. And I think that looking at consensus is a smart thing to do, but more than that, looking at a professional. Tina is a, she's worked for world-class architect firms, and she's done research on this, and she is an abutter. Right, well, I'm just clarifying that for the record. And she did a lot of rec, research on sound attenuation and aesthetics. She has a beautiful home. The aesthetics are incredible. And she stated here earlier in the meeting that, that the metal fence with the sound attenuation is a better idea than the wood. And I think you've got to agree on which fence you have between you, but it's pretty clear that you got, well, you've got somebody that's on your side of the table. That's done a lot of research, and I think that it is, I would personally defer to a world-class architect if it were me. And that's all I had to say about it.
Well, I mean, I don't want to look at the chain link fence either, so that I have one rows, one row of trees that I'm going to see a chain fence through.
Well, based on, have you seen the acoustic fence? Pam, have you seen this? I'm just curious, because it's, it's, it appears, again, I haven't seen the material. It appears to be a black blanket material effectively, so I'm, it doesn't sound like you're going to see either fence.
Well, as long as I have a guarantee, I have to see them.
I mean, honestly, right? It doesn't sound like you're going to see the fence. You're going to see the blanket. You're just not going to see the material.
John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive. I believe that the acoustic blanket goes on the Thayer Nursery side of the fence. I don't believe it goes on both sides of the fence.
On the, on the wood.
Yeah, so what the neighbors will see is the cedar fence that hopefully is stained, a dark stain, and maintained every year. I have a cedar fence that I have stained pretty much every year with a Benjamin Moore solid latex stain. And if you have your fence with pressure-treated posts in cement, and you have it stained every year or every two years, the fence should really last probably at least a couple of decades, maybe even more. But it has to be maintained.
Okay, and just one other. Along Forest Street, right now, I've been looking at a huge pile of gravel all winter, and I see that there's no fence extending over to what it looks like Josh's fence. And what is the purpose of that area there? What are you going to be doing?
The fence would extend beyond that.
Now, I'm talking across Forest, so when you're driving up Forest right now where that big pile is.
Mm-hmm.
Where you would be storing in there.
Again.
As discussed last time, it was basically continuing a grow-out area, and it's a storage area of tables for the nursery.
So that's a storage area. I would like the fence. Well, there's no fence proposed there. I'd like the fence to, let me show you.
Go down to Forest Street.
You want it to go down and terminate at Forest Street or turn the corner at Forest Street?
Turn the corner.
Okay.
So we don't see the, the tables and storage and all the things being stored there. I'd like the fence extended parallel to Forest Street.
I mean, just as we go through the process here, obviously, we have to do our own cost analysis to see if this is a deal breaker or not.
Look.
Well, nobody wants to look at your storage area.
Mr. Chair, just to add some clarity, so they, the applicant actually submitted a letter from Cascade Audio Engineering. It's dated December 19th, 2014. The last line of the letter states, "These reduction amounts are the minimum requirement reductions if the material is used by itself. Installing the material on a wooden fence only improves the reduction." So hopefully that answers the question.
But it doesn't say the difference.
Acoustically, the wooden fence is better. According to this letter, which is from their son.
Economically, the chain link.
Yeah.
Acoustically.
Which is why on all the construction sites, you see chain link fence about six feet high, because that's the cheapest way to build.
I'm not worried about their expense.
I can get a sample of, which I can bring or send to the board if you'd want a sample of what the acoustical barrier, the material actually is, if that's helpful.
They're recommending the same material, by the way, this letter, so.
That would be fantastic if you could get a piece of the material. That'd be great. Thank you.
It looks like a, what you see in a tennis court.
Right, yeah.
It's just, it's about a quarter-inch thing, and it looks like.
And it has to have the ability to sway in the wind, so it absorbs the noise waves.
But it sounds like it's, it's the same material that's been proposed. It's just whether it goes on a chain link or a wooden fence. So, okay.
The most expensive component of all this stuff is that stuff.
Is the fence, yeah, exactly.
No, it's the acoustic fence.
It's the acoustical stuff, okay. So do you have a preference on the chain link versus the wood? I mean, we should ask. We know one person prefers the wood.
What I'm going to propose is a chain link with acoustic fence or a cedar fence?
Okay, that answers that question?
So there's another option.
So can I ask why it's a 10-foot in the back and only an eight-foot along my side?
Yeah, pressure, actually, it's pressure.
That has been a question going on. That's what we're trying to figure out.
And I thought we answered that last time.
Yes, we did.
Was, we discussed that last time, that the Johanning property line sits at a lower elevation, and so they need a taller fence.
I think, I don't understand that, but.
Yeah, he.
That's his backwards view or whatever.
He understands the top.
But I think then the question becomes if the planning board.
If you're lower.
Well, it's not just that.
You really need less fence.
If the, if the.
You're higher, you need more fence.
If the planning board requires.
I don't understand.
But if the planning board requires a fence to go all the way around, it would make sense, for all sorts of reasons, for the fence to be the same height. So the question is, in addition to material.
It shouldn't be. It should go from eight to 10 if that's the case.
Eight to 10, up and around? Yes, I interrupted you. Sorry.
Is there a, is there, is there a condition that we can put in place that is, that is, this letter basically requires a, or recommends a certain decibel transmission. At some point, can we go that route?
Yes, absolutely.
And just say, this is your requirement. Achieve it.
I think the neighbors would probably want a little bit more specificity about how it's, but what the decibel level allows you to do is it allows you to check for enforcement.
Gives you enforcement.
That's the ambient level, and right now, the ambient level is so.
Does the building commissioner have a meeting?
Yeah, that's, the building commissioner won't do it.
He won't do it?
He says he don't have that.
If he's not going to do it, then we're not going to do, I mean, we can't impose it, so.
Okay, we've got another comment.
I want to reiterate that I would prefer a 10-foot cedar fence. I think, Emily, you wrote down the specification?
I did, yes.
With the acoustic blanket. And it should be placed in front of the hemlocks.
Yep.
And.
Pressure-treated posts, yeah.
You know, I think it probably would be good if we could have a site visit so that you could see.
And hear.
This and hear it. No matter what we do with this acoustical fence, it's not going to stop the beeping of the backing up of the trucks, the tractor-trailer trucks and the bobcats, which is constant.
Or the new.
And it doesn't stop the air pollution. We have, they have all diesel equipment that idles constantly. And if, you know, when the air is heavy, the diesel exhaust permeates my entire yard, basically the entire neighborhood. I would encourage you to come up there some morning when the air is heavy and just witness the air pollution. Well, there's noise and there's air pollution. You know, the air pollution is bad for my health.
And somebody in our packet submitted a drawing with prevailing winds, but it didn't say who that draw, that was, that was from you? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. It wasn't actually attached to the letter, so I wanted to make sure I knew who it came from.
Can you just source that for us? What was the source of that? Just, because that was one of my questions, actually.
That was me walking out to my property and taking basically my iPhone and taking where the wind is and pointing it at it. And it comes in in that direction.
Okay.
And doing that for a few days.
No, I think we can.
And I knew it was there, but I just basically had to, like, I wanted to document it in north, southeast, and west.
If you actually go onto the Blue Hills Observatory website, they actually do by day and by wind speed every day.
Yeah, I thought I seen one, yeah.
And so the prevailing wind is generally from the west. And we can get that from the National Weather Service in Taunton.
That would be, that would be the opposite in all due respect. That southwest would be the opposite of what you show.
No, we are, we are east, we are east of the property.
Yeah.
We're east, and the prevailing wind is from the west to the east.
It's coming right over.
I just wanted to know who had submitted it, so I knew where it was coming from. Thank you.
There, because Pam's property line is our southern property line.
So Mr. Chair, it's getting close on to 10 o'clock.
We are, we are going to go.
I just want to know how you want to proceed going forward.
I want to finish the fences, and I want to find out about whether or not the board was in agreement that we should leave the lot where it was beforehand.
I think we can take those two votes.
My town matters seem to think that I made that decision myself.
I don't think it was a unilateral decision.
I don't think it was unilateral either, so, but we can certainly clarify that.
We can discuss it, but I don't think it was unilateral.
All right, so let's finish up the fence first, just so we, before we start jumping around to other discussions. Where do we want to be?
Well, I, I, I mean.
Can I say something?
Can we finish the fence?
We're going to try and finish the fence, but we're going to try and figure out what to make it with.
Well, we're going to do that right now.
We need to have this discussion.
Do you have a problem with a 10-foot fence? Yes. Okay, what size fence would you like? Eight foot. Eight-foot fence? There's no compromise with the eight-foot fence? No.
No, we need a 10-foot fence. What we really like is a wall, you know.
Like the Great Wall of China.
You know, Cheryl Tagayus, Cheryl, Cheryl Tagayus, last year.
Put on the plan, the fence has to be complete, has to make a corner, draw it on the plan. If that's what you want to submit, submit an eight-foot fence, and we'll have to vote on it. That's all.
I will say one thing, a 10-foot wooden fence, I think is going to be hard to find.
It's going to be hard to find any 10-foot fence. Chain link, any, any 10-foot. You're going to have to special-order chain link to get 10-foot.
Tennis court fence might be 10 feet.
And they probably have to special-order it, and they don't get it every day. They don't see it every day.
Can I say something about the fence? And something that really concerns me is that the purpose of this zoning bylaw change was to protect the neighbors and to protect the residential character of the neighborhood. And it is not to save the Oldfields money. You know, I really could, if, if the fence is too expensive, then the alternative is you can run your commercial landscape construction company in a commercial zone. We have to look at, this planning board should be charged with making sure whatever is approved is protection for maintaining the residential character of the neighborhood and for the protection of the neighbors. And Alex, you wrote, you wrote the, the zoning bylaw, and you stated at town meeting, and you've stated many times, that that's the purpose of this bylaw.
With all due respect, I don't think we're gaining anything by spending hours on end explaining the charge of the planning board. We should know our charge by now. We're not, we're not accomplishing by spending hours on end talking about the same thing over and over, and what our charge is. We know what our charge is.
Well, I don't, I have, can I comment on that?
That's not their opinion.
Can I comment on that? I have, I have a lot, I have concerns that the planning board, specifically Emily, has contributed to the writing of the application of Thayer Nursery.
You want to say something?
But can I finish? You know, probably, probably issuing special permits should not be with the planning board. It should be with the Zoning Board of Appeals, where it stands today. And I believe that the Zoning Board of Appeals would never participate in writing an application. And where I think the lines can be blurred here is that your job is always to help write zoning bylaw changes. This is not a zoning bylaw change. This is an application for a special permit that the applicant's attorney and Alex Whiteside wrote the zoning bylaw together. And, and so the applicant should know what's in the zoning bylaw. And we continue to have an application that has false, you know, information that's incorrect. You know, there's a lot of information that's incorrect in the application, and there are things that they're asking for in the application that are strictly prohibited by the existing zoning bylaws, as well as the zoning bylaw that allows them to ask for this. The last application, I mean, how many applications have we had? I, you know, I don't know. I've lost count. The last application, or maybe it was the one before, introduced all of this language about the artisans' market, amplified music, all of this stuff is prohibited. It's, it's clear in the new zoning bylaw. Why are we entertaining an application that is clearly insufficient and asks for things that are not allowed in the current zoning, nor is it allowed in the, the, the zoning bylaw that allows them to apply for an, you know, apply for this? Furthermore, as you are all aware, we don't believe that the applicants are even eligible to apply for this. So Emily, you know, you forced my hand. I don't believe that you should be entertaining revising or writing anything for the applicants. And, and I'm sorry, but you have forced my hand.